All right. Good evening. I'm going to call and order, or call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. Time is 6:00 PM. And just as a note for members of the public and council, we do have a timed certain item at 7 o'clock for agenda item number 12 for our budget presentation. So we will pause any agenda items or try to accommodate that time as much as possible so that folks that may be planning to attend at that time can do so. We are going to start with public comments. I did receive one card for Tia Burton, and we'll go ahead and have them step up to the microphone. Oh, Ted Burton, sorry. I thought it was Ted Burton.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ted Burton. I grew up at 6401 Brody Lane, along with my two sisters, one of whom is here tonight, Susan Burton, my brother, Dad and Mom, Ann Gault. My family was deeply saddened to learn of your decision to demolish our family home rather than find a way to preserve it for the benefit of Sunset Valley. First, a little history. The Burton family moved from Austin to Sunset Valley, way out in the country, back in 1966, where my mom planted roots that would grow for 56 years until she passed on February 18th, 2022. My family's ties to Sunset Valley run very deep. My father, Charles Burton, was mayor of Sunset Valley, actually then it was the village of Sunset Valley, from 1969, 1970, 1971. My guess is people weren't lining up to run for mayor and it was more of a game of not it. That's how he became the mayor of the city. After my parents divorced, my mom remained on Brody Lane, where she remained an active community member until the time she passed. A passionate, certified master gardener, mom was the founder of the garden out there, the community garden, which continues, I would say, to thrive today, but in this drought, nothing's thriving, but it's still there. She and the two Bettys, Betty Dunn and Betty Grubbs, would show up at city council meetings from time to time to raise a little hell and make sure the city was running right. I don't think any of you were on the council then, but you may have heard stories. Mom and Betty Dunn served on the Community Development and Public Relations Committee that prepared an informal history of Sunset Valley in 2004 for the 50th anniversary. Having earned her master's degree in library science from UT, it's no surprise this informal history is well researched and referenced and is linked to your website today. Mom's community service efforts extended well beyond Sunset Valley. She served on the Planned Parenthood Board in the 1970s, a tradition my sister and I continue today. She was a campaign volunteer for our little-known Travis County Commissioner, Ann Richards, and over the years, mom volunteered as an election poll worker in numerous nonprofits and causes, usually supporting literacy, libraries, healthcare justice, and of course gardening. When my mom signed a life estate with Sunset Valley about 15 years ago, the city agreed her property would never be developed and instead remain green space or parkland. Her wishes and your commitment are captured in the 2023 Future Land Use Map, which indicates 6401 Brody Lane is dedicated for parks, green space, and conservation. After mom passed, we had several conversations with Mayor Protim Johnson, thank you Mayor Protim, and Lisa Versace. Both came out and toured the property and the home. Ironically, Lisa purchased her home on Pillow Road from my dad and his second wife, Suzie Huber. They lived there for decades. So yes, our roots to Sunset Valley run deep. When Lisa and Mayor Protim Johnson toured the property, we talked about possibilities, possibility of renovating the home and giving it new life, perhaps for the community, perhaps an office space for a new community garden, or maybe a small mission-aligned nonprofit. Certainly, it's easier and less expensive to bulldoze something rather than to rehab and renovate. However, this home, which was built in the 50s, when it's torn down, another piece of this community history will vanish forever. According to the July 18th agenda item, removal of two homes on Brody Lane will cost about $85,000, while the estimated cost of preserving 6401 Brody Lane is somewhere between $200,000 and $400,000. Sunset Valley has $27 million in reserves. So really, this isn't about money, it's about convenience. You can help maintain a piece of Sunset Valley's history and create something special for the community. While it may be too late for you to reconsider your decision to demolish the home at 6401 Brody Lane, I urge you to preserve this property as green or open space for future generations to enjoy, not retail, not a restaurant, but true open space, a community meeting space. In an email September 1st, Public Works Director Carolyn Meredith stated, quote, "We are hoping to preserve stone and brick from the house for future construction and will look for ways to honor Ms. Gault on Arbor Gardens, et cetera, in future projects. I hope, we hope, you will honor your commitment and our mom's legacy. While parts of Sunset Valley and its history are gone forever, it's not too late to preserve this piece of the past for generations to come." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that wish to speak at this time? All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number three, which is staff reports, starting with the city administrator.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, projects ongoing. We are obviously underway with our fiscal year 24 budget. We'll be having a public hearing later, and the adoption is scheduled for September 19th. For the new ERP, financial and human resources software, we are now under phase two of the project, and the data conversion is underway. We've already delivered a lot of the data from MIP. We worked with Univista, and Kyle's been doing a lot of work to get that data over to Tyler Technologies. We haven't finalized the agreement with GovBuild yet for the permitting and licensing software. We need to meet with McComas Inspections, our inspector and plan reviewer, to make sure they are on board with us moving over to a new system, and then we'll proceed with finalizing the agreement with GovBuild. Upcoming events, Sunset Valley Arts Commission is having a World Art and Culture event here at City Hall featuring Spain. That is on Friday, September 15th. National Night Out will be Tuesday, October 3rd. We will not have a council meeting because of that event. And then there is a volunteer appreciation event at Total Wine. This is for all of our committee, board, and commission volunteers from fiscal year 23, happening on October 20th. The CED Committee will not be meeting tomorrow night. That meeting was canceled, but they will be meeting next month. Arts Commission meets next week, and the Budget and Finance Committee resumes their regular meetings starting the last Thursday of this month. The Development and Permitting Activity Report is there. The economic reports, including sales tax and the retail occupancy report, were attached as well. And there was a budget amendment, signed by the mayor and myself, budget amendment number three, that was under the threshold that needed council approval. So, any questions from the admin report?
Any questions for the city administrator on the admin report? Thank you. We're going to move on to the Public Works Reports.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to highlight a few things. First, there's been a slight shift in the mill and overlay. They would actually like to start and do that on Thursday. They would do one street on Thursday and one street on Friday of this week, and that part of the project was going to be done as far as the mill and overlay. That would leave only the one small segment of Highway 290 sewer line to kind of complete the majority of that project there. Water restrictions. We sent out information last week that affects all the majority of customers here in Sunset Valley. As far as water restrictions go, basically everybody has one day to water. We went ahead also and sent out the water restrictions that applies to well users as well. We know some people have wells in Sunset Valley, and they may be using that for irrigation. And right now, the Edward Dachfer is in a critical drought stage. It's only about a foot and a half above exceptional drought stage. So, pretty much most outdoor watering is prohibited unless you're like holding a hose kind of thing. So, that is happening right now. Obviously, we don't have the ability to really enforce those regulations, but we wanted to let everybody know what the awkward district could enforce and how that they may be able to enforce those. Let me see if there's anything else. But yeah, those are the main things that we'd like to highlight in the report today. If there's any questions on anything else in the report, we'd be happy to answer those.
Councilor Young.
A quick question about the email that you sent out today, which, by the way, I didn't get, but my wife did. So, and I've heard from various residents at times that they don't get mails. So I'm wondering what's going on there. It's not like intermittent, they get some and you don't get the others?
That's so weird. Yeah, I can look into it while here.
It might be an issue with eye contact. I don't know.
Yeah, and see if there's some weirdness with what we did. Yeah.
I was also a little bit confused by the mail. Does it only apply to people who have water wells, or does it apply to everyone?
What we sent out today was only for well users.
Okay.
So that only applies to well users. And it did say, if you have a well, this is kind of what applies to you. We did send out like an email last week that applies to everybody else here in Sunset Valley.
Okay.
So yeah, that email today was just for the private well users.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Public Works? I did want to highlight that, appreciate the quick work on getting the Oakdale Backflow completed. So I'll highlight that, just if you want to talk about that just a little bit more.
Yeah, so that happened, that was super quick. They did it in about two days. They were able to take the backflow out and then replace it and have everything operational pretty quickly over on Oakdale. And it looks like, and I can let Dakota kind of highlight kind of the test that we did on the hydrant over there. We did issue a boil water notice for Oakdale. They only have one kind of feed of water, and with all the extensive work that we did on it. So they did have a boil water notice that was in front from basically Wednesday through Friday, and then we were able to lift that once everything came back. But Dakota, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, so our previous reading for gallons per minute on the fire hydrant on Oakdale was 1,358 gallons per minute, and our new recording was 2,243 gallons a minute. So it's improved significantly with the change in the backflow.
Put some pictures out that you guys sent to you guys, so you can see what the different backflows look like and what a difference it probably was going to make to that water line.
Great. Yeah, thank you for the quick work on that. I know it certainly much appreciated that it didn't inconvenience the residences for as long a time. Mayor Protim?
What's a backflow made out of?
Mostly metal. So backflows are basically just put in place to protect the public water system from back siphoning from people's lawns and different things like that. So a lot of them are, you have small ones probably, if you have an irrigation system, you probably have a little double check device, which is smaller kind of backflow device. And these are reverse pressure zones so that the water can't back siphon into the public water system.
So, we have them on our little bubs there on our house. They're only like this big, but they're heavy sin and they're brass. How big is a backflow for something like that?
Oh, massive. I can send you guys a picture. It's huge.
Do we get to keep it?
We have the old one. We're kind of investigating it and looking out. So if you want to see the old one, it's back here behind our building. So yeah.
Also, I'm also thinking like, artwork or, that's a lot of scrap metal. Those things are probably heavy as sin and worth.
Yeah, we saved it so that we could kind of investigate it and see what was going on inside of it and stuff. So it's back behind Public Works right now. Actually, it was really funny. I was driving down when it was coming in. I was like, I think that's the black flow headed that way. So it's good.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, move on to public safety.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything as interesting as a backflow device to talk about, but Carolyn mentioned the drought, and the police department, as well as Public Works, we are being vigilant about any fire hazards that could impact the city. On the 23rd, we had a tabletop exercise to kind of figure out what our vulnerabilities were and whatnot, as well as how we would respond and evacuate the area. We are focusing on that, and any information that we are, there's a lot of relevant information that we're putting on the website, as well as attending the countywide meetings on the fire hazard that we're facing right now. I will tell you that we've had, since the last council meeting, about two or three incidents where we've had to respond with APD or with the fire marshal for people starting fires out in the green spaces and whatnot. So we are being very vigilant about that. And it's not just us. I noticed that the other law enforcement agencies are responding to those calls that we used to leave up to. We would say, hey, contact the fire marshal regarding this, but officers are now responding to those before they get out of hand. So, we are going to keep you as safe as we can.
Councilor Rosengard.
Coming here this evening at 5:30, there was a police action with fire department right at the corner of Brody at the first shopping center, the Market Fair, Villas, actually. Do you know what the situation was? There was no fire. I couldn't see a fire.
No, there was no fire. I believe that was a mental, someone had caused a disturbance at the shopping center. I know they were looking for somebody about the time I came this way, that had caused a disturbance at one of the restaurants. I don't have any details on it yet.
Okay. I know the vehicle, all four of the, what do you call those, safety mechanisms, the pillows that pop out if you have a collision.
Oh, the.
All sides were, had expanded.
Oh, it was an accident.
Yeah.
I know we were dispatched to one of the stores right about the time that I was walking here, so.
Thank you.
Mayor Protim?
There's probably so many fires going on at any moment, but I don't know when they start getting like closer, and you wonder like why they're starting. So there's a community garden almost due west of here, just off of South First. It's like Emerald Way or whatever. And that community garden got like burned down in like part of like the green area. It's right on Williamson Creek. It's just, I think, north of Williamson Creek. And if you read through the comments, which you shouldn't do, but it's like, they just say it was started by the homeless, someone in the homeless community right there. Are these just like accidental fires that are starting usually, or is it?
I mean, they're not intentional, but it's people that are starting fires either to cook or, in two of the cases that we had though, they were, those were intentional just starting a fire. It was not, there was no intention to cook. It was just starting a fire. But they were both across over by specs, and they were, someone called in really quick. I think residents and citizens are also being very vigilant about someone starting a fire, even with throwing cigarettes out of the window. That's something that we would have ignored most of the time, but now you'll get a citation for that if we catch you throwing a lit cigarette out of the window. So, we're all very aware of it, so.
Yeah, I just remember we were in that Westgate camp last summer, and as you're walking through, you see areas where there were just obviously a fire within the last day. It's just like, how did this not, it was just a drive last summer?
If you're living outside, I mean, you're going to start fires to cook and whatever it is that you do.
Any questions for public safety? Thank you, Chief. All right, that'll move us on to agenda item number four, which is council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent agenda item number six, number seven, number eight with the date added, number nine, number 10 with the corrections, and number 11.
All right, so the motion is for six, seven, eight with the date added, nine, 10 with corrections, and 11. Does anybody want to pull one of those items to discuss it for the mayor?
Number 11.
All right, we'll pull number 11. Any other items that, Councilor Young?
Number 10, I just have one question.
All right, we'll pull number 10. Any others? All right, so the motion would be to approve on consent number six, seven, eight with corrections, nine, and that's it. Is there a second for that? Mayor Protim, a second? The C Sunset Valley Farmers Market to 3,000 Jones Road on Saturday, September 30th, 2023. Item number seven, approval of an ordinance that adopts the express vote universal voting system version 6.3.0.0, provided by Election Systems and Software as an accessible voting system facilitated by Travis County elections. Item number eight, approval of an ordinance canceling the November 7th, 2023 regular election and declaring the three unopposed candidates, Karen Medikus, David Burrell, and Rudy Rosengard to be elected. Congratulations to our new council member. And the, so the way that'll work, just as a quick information, is that it is, they are, they're going to be appointed, but as per the regular election rules, which means they won't actually be seated until we would normally seat, which will happen sometime once the canvassing is complete by Travis County. So, item number nine, approval of an ordinance amending Chapter 31.36 regarding municipal judge residency requirements. All right, and that'll take us back to agenda number five, Consider An Act On Approval Of The Minutes From August 15th, 2023 Regular Meeting. And, Council, if you wanted to discuss this item? Was that on, I don't, you said six, seven, eight, nine?
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed five.
Okay. Well, we can have a regular motion.
We get to talk about it.
And we can take a regular motion, so you go ahead and approve that if you wish. Mayor Protim?
Oh, anybody.
That's an easy one. Move, we approve the minutes from the August 15th, 2023 Regular Meeting. Is there a second for that motion?
It's a second.
Lots of seconds. Hopefully you got one of those. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, that'll take us to agenda item number 10, Consider An Act On Approval Of An Ordinance Amending Chapter 71 Traffic Schedules Restricting Left Turns From The 3,300 Block Of Jones Road At Its Intersection With Circular Driveways Entrance To Sunset Valley Elementary Between 1:30 PM And 3:30 PM. And, Councilor Young, you had a question on this one?
Just a quick question on the traffic flow. So, if you are coming down Jones from Westgate, you can make that right turn into the school, right? If you're coming down Jones from Ernest Robles, you cannot make a left turn into the driveway that is closest to Pillow Road, right? That's what the ordinance says.
The driveway closest to, it's the second driveway, actually. It's the driveway, second driveway from Pillow Road.
Yeah.
The first driveway is a one-way, so the traffic flow goes from the second driveway now.
Okay, so the one that's closest to Reese, you can't make a left turn into.
Correct.
Now, for the traffic coming out, can they make a left turn back onto Jones Road?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't think that's something that's going to block traffic that's just going down Jones. It is not part of the school.
No. This will prevent Jones from backing up. Well, it won't prevent it, but it will reduce the backup there at Jones, because it's just the one lane there. Once the one, a car stands, it just, it backs up all the way down Jones Road.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't experienced the morning and afternoon, you know, it's the left-hand turn from the driveway Sunset Valley is not so much an issue because people essentially wait or let somebody pass, and then they can go. But that backup that can occur when somebody's trying to turn that left-hand, which is what we're trying to prevent.
I've seen that backup many times in the morning and in the afternoon.
And, Council, one note is that we had, based on some email discussions, we've had some, the current ordinance actually refers to a street that no longer is named that street. It's Henry Miller Drive is what's in our current ordinance for the traffic control. And so, what I asked staff to do is to make sure that we go back and clean up anywhere where we have the old reference, but also more importantly probably, is to make sure that our code aligns with what is legally required for us to maintain traffic safety. The original purpose of that left-hand on Henry Miller Drive was probably predates the current Highway 290, and it was probably enacted when Highway 290 was a two-lane road that you could turn left-hand onto. Now, of course, there's not really. that you could turn left hand onto. Now, of course, there's not really much sense in making a left turn onto Highway 290, but we still have a sign there saying that left hand turns. So part of this is also just to, you know, we want to clean that up, but also I've asked staff to go and make sure that we work with the police department to make sure that we account for anything that we do need to include in our ordinance as well. Councilor Rosengard?
Do you mind reminding us what happened with trying to divert all the traffic off of Jones for the pickup and the drop off of the children? We were trying to do it over on Tony, on the Oregon Trail, and we were also trying to do it behind the building.
We, doing it behind the building would require us to work with the school district to make a driveway out in, on, in the parking lot. That, I mean, we're not really, we haven't moved very far on that. I think we have talked about it briefly with somebody from the school district, but that one, it would take a while to get that done. As far as building, paving a route behind the school, is that what you, you were meaning?
On Danny, uh, Oregon, on Hen- oh, sorry, I said the wrong word.
Oh, Masters.
On Hor- yes, thank you. On the right-hand side where the dumpsters are, we also talked about doing it there. And that would have diverted a lot of traffic.
And having them exit onto 290?
Yes.
Yeah. We haven't, it would divert traffic, but we, we, I think we're gonna have, we would have to cut through the stadium parking lot and do it behind the 71 exit or the 290 exit ramp there. And we just haven't made it too far on that one. The school did the Jones, and they kind of form a queue in the parking lot of the stadium now. It's better than it was, but it's still, there's still some jams, but they used to park all the way down Jones. Now they are at least diverting them in kind of a circular through the back parking lot of the stadium.
Yeah, we, we did, and if staff wants to elaborate on this, but we did meet, staff met with AST because of what the proposal was, was to reroute Master Charge in Oregon such that it would be curving to where it could access the frontage road of 290.
Right.
Sort of aligning with the triangle that's there, but, you know, cutting through the parking lot of Burger Stadium. And that would allow us to have traffic flow go out officially in that direction. There is a lot of unofficial traffic that does use the stadium right now to drive through the parking lot and go access 290, but this would allow us to have an official route there. And they rejected the proposal, the proposed route that Freeland Turk and staff had come up with. We are revisiting that and potentially maybe looking at maybe using another route that could take it over more of the city property and going back. AST's concerned with the proposal as it was, was it would, they would lose too many parking spaces for their, their events, right? And so that's something that we are continuing to look at, but it's very early in the, the stages of development in terms of whether we could actually reroute Master Charge in Oregon far enough to where it could be opened up onto 290, because right now where it dead ends, we're not allowed to open up on 290 because of the traffic speed and distance from the access ramp.
Thank you.
Councilor Young?
Uh, move we approve an ordinance amending chapter 71, traffic schedules restricting left turns from the 3300 block of Jones Road, uh, in the driveway entrance into Sunset Valley Elementary between 1:30 and 3:30 when school is in session.
With edits that we had, that we have, right?
Okay.
With the, with the corrected ordinance that we, I think we updated, yeah?
Yes.
Great. Second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilor Medikus. Further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, motion passes. Moves us on to agenda number 11, consider an act on approval of the purchase of a step. And if we could, I think we'd hand this over to the public works. Well, who had the question? Uh, Mayor Pretend, do you want to ask your question first, and then we can bring up the agenda item if we need to?
Sure. Two questions. First is, I'm, I'm just thinking of like fondue machines that get so dirty and they're impossible to clean that you just throw them out. So like what can go wrong with one of these if the sealant just sits in there and is not properly, I trust you guys, and they're going to train you on the use, but like, what could go wrong with this piece of equipment?
I'm gonna pass that one.
So I mean, you're, you're right. If, if you don't properly maintain the unit at camp, it just gets really, really dirty. But with it being a rubberized crack fill with heat, it comes off. So you just heat it back up.
Heat it back up, yeah, okay.
Three miles, and then you can clean it off. So it's, I did it a lot at my previous job, so it's, I don't see it being a problem.
Cool. I, I love the idea of spending or saving that much money. Uh, the only other question is the, the proposal notes at the bottom say, the quote is good until May 28th. Are they still on or not?
I just talked to him and it's, it's fine. The quote still stands, so.
Wow. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff for proposing a motion?
Alright, with that, uh, move we approve the purchase of a step MFG crack sealer.
Is there a second for that? Councilor Young? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the purchase of a step MFG crack sealer, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Um, council, since we have our time cert 9 and 7, I would propose that we, we take this time to actually have a discussion on agenda number 13. Uh, I don't remember 14, we, I guess we could go forward with that one for the discussion ahead of the budget, but is there enough time to have the discussion on 13? And we could revisit that once we have maybe the tribunals attending?
Yeah, I would, you know, if, if we do end up going into collective session, we run the risk of then not being back in time for agenda item number 13, or sorry, number 12. So could we start by discussing agenda item 14?
Sure, and then we can take a break if we need to.
Yeah, we can always return.
Alright, so council, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with agenda number 14, which is tied with our budget discussion, and then we can bring that forward before we go to our time cert 9 of 7 o'clock. So item number 14, presentation and possible action on the amendments to chapter 4202 to expand the city's water conservation rebate program to include both residential and commercial as recommended by the planning and environmental committee. And we'll begin with a staff presentation of the other item.
So back in July, we kind of overviewed these rebates. There was really only one rebate that seemed to raise a lot of questions, and that was the, like native planting the yard and yard conversion and how that would work, thinking that it wasn't going to be enough. So we did, I did make a change to that and changed it to a, instead of being a so much per square foot, it's more of a 50% of the cost up to $6,000, before it was about $3,000. So doubled the cost of that, increased, made it more of a percentage base versus a square footage space. And then, uh, it, once you combine that with the City of Austin rebate that residents would be able to also apply for, it's about $9,000 toward a project like that, because those projects are going to be very, very expensive. Another kind of component of this is that this is gonna also require some education. And the planning environmental committee, they have a subgroup that hopefully will be working on trying to get that educational component made so that we can kind of show people how this is done. It's something that people can definitely hire contractors to do. It's something that they may be able to do parts of this and do within, in kind of segments themselves as well, depending on what is they're looking to do in their yard. The other recommendation that staff has made is that of that million dollars that this council set aside would be to use about 100,000 of that to start off these new rebates in the FY24 budget to kind of cover those costs. Those are the main changes and recommendations that we have that's different from what we talked about in July. We went ahead and we prepared like an ordinance for this, if the council wanted to go ahead and adopt these changes, we could go ahead and do that and start implementing and providing educational programming on them and getting them, you know, promote it and market it out to especially the commercial area since it's gonna be something completely new for them. That's not something we are doing right now. And kind of get those kind of underway and get them ready to go. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has. I just looked at this and I know some of them are very hard to read online. Like, I just, I don't know why it did that. Like, it's very hard to read.
Could you bring up the, the table with the recommendations? It is a little faint. Do you have a way of like just having a?
It's in the shared drive. And you may be able to bring it up and just make it larger. So I can go over the differences real quick as far as the changes that were made. So the electric propane lawn equipment before, it was basically just like blowers and weed eaters. Now it's been expanded to cover all electric propane lawn equipment. Light pollution increased from two fixtures to four fixtures, and it's up to $200 or 75% of the cost. And that can also include the cost to bring in an electrician to, since some people aren't comfortable making those changes themselves, that bring an electrician in. So again, that cost can also be included. Rainwater harvesting, it still keeps basically the same kind of program kind of structure, but instead of $3,000, it ups it to $5,000 and increase the, the first thousand dollars is covered at 100%. And, and several of these are the, the minimum requirements were removed for the Villas because some of it just does not make sense for them to have large systems. Those were some of the main changes. There were no changes actually in the weatherization rebate that were recommended at this time. Native, the, to the beds, those were what I just kind of discussed earlier. We did remove the lawn to not irrigate it because instead we just did the, increased the amount for capping an irrigation station, because that's kind of where you're at with that. And then there were a few new rebates that were proposed in this process. Rainscape, which could be incorporated in with some of the lawn conversions that we mentioned earlier. That's 30 cents, up to $500 for property for the Austin rebates, but we're proposing a dollar for every square foot plus up to $3,000. So that's a good way to do that. And that conserves water, but that's also kind of like stormwater management at the same time. It has a little bit of both kind of components to that kind of design. Pool covers, additional $200 for pool covers. Landscapes survival tools, our rebates are slightly different from the City of Austin because we're not offering rebates on mulch, because the city provides large quantities of mulch for a very inexpensive price to be delivered. So we're not doing a rebate on that. But there is a rebate that can also be included for compost as well as pour aeration and increasing the rebates for that. And those are things that you do to just help make your yard better survive a drought. It's aerating the yard, that's increasing the mineral and natural kind of substances that are in the yard to just help it to survive and be a, a better lawn that's going to be able to withstand more drought conditions. And maybe if things start to get compacted, then it starts to dry out quicker and you're gonna need more water to, you know, increase that soil infiltration there. There is also then just the water timers, up to $40 on those, which can be combined, once again, I think with the City of Austin. And then there are a number of new proposed water-wise landscaping rebates. The first thing that would be required, water-wise landscaping rebates for commercial as well is where we're at. The first thing that would be required of any commercial property is the water efficiency audit. And Austin Water has a list of proposed people who already do this work. This is what, this is the type of work they do. So it would be combining and kind of being part of that in that the city would basically cover the cost of that audit, so that the commercial businesses would not be out any money on getting that audit done, because that's gonna show them where their water use is, what, where they need to make improvements, what changes need to be made. And then after that, then they can apply, hopefully it falls into some of these other rebate categories of where they can make those kind of changes. The city would be participating then with the businesses in rainwater harvesting, the water-wise rainscapes, and the landscaping. Those are slightly larger than the residential because generally the commercial properties are very large, if they're owned by a shopping center. And there's also, it's a question of quantity, there's more residential yards than there are commercial actually owned properties in the city. The other one that is a big project is bucks per business, and this is something where the, based on that water audit kind of thing, they can come up with a project and show how much water they're gonna save over time. And the city would then look at what they're providing and the information and see if this is going to be an actual water savings and then provide some rebates for those things that can be, and it, they could be a very large rebate depending on what, what they're proposing. So those are the basic programs that we're looking at kind of in, installing at this point in time. And, and you know, it's a good way to kind of get it started. And then if we need to make tweaks at some point, we can always come back and say, okay, this one people are really liking, or this one, nobody's doing it. We can, you know, come back every year, basically kind of like we do through the budget process to say what rebates are working and what rebates people are not taking advantage of. And then we can discover what it is maybe that's hindering people from doing those things. I think, given that the drought statuses we have, anything we can do to save water and water's basically gonna be the new goal probably going into the future is that we're gonna need to be able to conserve as much as we can.
I did have a few follow-up questions then before I get to, to council. So the $100,000 that we proposed adding or taking out of the million dollars that we got committed into this year's budget, it does, have we done any kind of like analysis to say this number of commercial users might take advantage of it in the first year? If that's just a placeholder and we-
That's just a placeholder that we kind of started with, just saying, we'll just take a tenth of that budget and put it in there to hold, to start off the program and say where we want to go from there. Since I, I don't know how many will actually take advantage of it to start with in the first year.
And can you explain again what the, the process will be for commercial users to apply for these rebates?
So the first thing they would have to do is that water efficiency audit. And like I said, City of Austin has a whole list of companies that perform these type of audits on the property. So this would be the first thing that the commercial businesses would do, because like I said, that's gonna tell where they're using water and where those savings opportunities are and what changes can be made depending on the property. So that is basically step one, is that we'll, I guess, backing up, is the first step we're gonna have to do is create the marketing information to get this out and kind of advertise this and educate the businesses on, on this program. But then they would do the water efficiency audit, and hopefully that comes back with some recommendations for them of what they need to do next. And then they would look at these other rebate opportunities and see if they would be going, you know, maybe, depending on the size, maybe rainwater harvesting makes some sense on some things. Depending on, it actually may be better to do some landscape conversions and to change, change out drip irrigations and things of that nature. So it, it will depend on that audit on where they would go next.
Okay. Last question. Where would this ASD facilities fall within this rebate program? Would they be eligible for either commercial or residential?
They would be part of the commercial. And there are segments, I think the rainscape, actually, that AIC, like the commercial areas would not be eligible for, but in Austin rebates, they are eligible for the rainscape. So they can double dip on that one, which I don't think any of the other businesses can. But they would fall into the commercial category.
Okay, so if, for example, the Sunset Elementary wanted to apply for this, they would get a water, an audit and follow the same process the commercial entity would and potentially take advantage of, if we move forward with these rebates?
Yes, they would follow the same process.
Okay, thank you. Sir Reitz?
So if we can go back to the water rebates for residential with the landscaping and the grain harvesting. So it was over a year, it was, was last, it might have been two years ago, we did the, we set aside the money for that. But the rebate, I believe, is too small to move the needle. And that's based on, I don't think we've had many takers to put in a rain harvesting system.
No, we've had lots of people put in rainwater harvesting.
How many?
Um, probably about four or five that we've had done.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's better than I thought.
I mean, not this year, but overall, yeah, that we've had rainwater harvesting done on a residential scale.
What about in the past year or two?
We haven't had anybody in the past year put in rainwater harvesting.
Okay.
But this actually, this is taking it from 3,000 to 5,000, and I think Austin has increased there. So that's almost a 10,000, I think it's 5,000 for Austin as well. So that's a $10,000 rebate altogether, I think. Let me look at those numbers real quick.
So that, you know, I am, I, I want to move that needle more. I mean, my- I mean, my vision was that every home would either have a drought resistant lawn or a rain harvesting system where our water costs go down and we are conserving water. Water will be the most essential resource that we have coming in the future, I believe. So, so I want to move the needle. I want it to be big enough to move the needle. That seminar that y'all had was outstanding where, you know, but what I also learned, it would probably be closer to 20,000 or something. You know, it's, it's an expensive endeavor to put in a large enough system to, to make a difference in our large lawns. You know, with the exception of Villas, we all have large lawns. And, and so the drought resistant also is something that I think we are at an opportune time that we need to let people know what we can do, what we do as a city, because there are a lot of brown lawns out there. And this would be an absolute perfect time to really make this happen. So one, I would like to see what that increase is, what we could increase, the rain harvesting system. But two, I'd also like to know if you did any research on if someone were to replace their lawn per se with a more drought tolerant grass, what type of money are we talking about that homeowner would have to, what, what would that cost, I guess?
What would the cost be? First, let's, I guess, talk rainwater harvesting.
Okay.
Currently, with the city does $3,500 in rebates. This would raise it to 5,000 plus the 5,000 that Austin would do. So that's a $10,000 rebate, which is about half the cost overall of the system, of a large system.
Yeah.
And then, so that's kind of where we're at with rainwater harvesting with these proposed changes. The lawn to, say, taking out a very, a higher water use lawn and putting in something that's more native and adapted, it's kind of hard to say exactly how, so it will depend. So some people may go out and rent a sod cutter and rip up their yard and kind of do it themselves. There's a few people out there who are, you know, very much into that kind of thing, which probably would bring down the price significantly. But I know that some people have looked even in smaller lawns and whatnot to make some conversion from probably lawn to like more native beds, not necessarily just lawn to lawn, which may include a little bit more time and maintenance for a lawn to native bed. And that's pretty expensive. Even on a smaller lawn, that's going to be about probably, you know, 18, 20, depending on what you're going to do. So what we are proposing here is about 9,000, which if it's an 18, that's about half. And so what we have proposed is that we would, this, the Austin rebate for that is a square footage based rebate. What we're proposing on the Sunset Valley side is that it's a percentage base. It's 50% of the cost up to $6,000. So if somebody had a $12,000 cost for doing their lawn, the city would cover about half of that cost for that. Now, if they had a $20,000 cost, the city would still only be recovering, covering about 6,000. So if it's 12,000, Sunset Valley plus Austin, it's going to be a $4,000 conversion, well, $3,000 conversion. Now, if it's a larger lawn, that percentage kind of doesn't, it's only meeting that. So if council wants to raise that to a higher number, that's definitely a recommendation for me. I do think the percentage is going to be an easier way to go than, than the square footage.
Yeah, I do like the percentage. And I would recommend raising that so we can really move the needle and we can really make, you know, get, and also the education process. We need to let people know what's available and how to get it done and that type of thing, so.
And people who do this kind of work.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, because it's probably just lawn to, you know, just playing buffalo sod.
Yeah.
Maybe that's probably pretty simple and easy. But I think if you're wanting to do something that's more like a native prairie or something like that in your yard, that would be a different thing. And I think that's also going to take education as well because I know the Meadows has homeowners associations and they have regulations. So it may be that we have to kind of also move the needle on what we consider to be an appropriate yard for Central Texas nowadays going into the future.
Yes, the homeowners association management team went through our neighborhood and recommended that because of all of the brown lawns and they were saying people weren't taking care of their lawns. But our management team, you know, fought back and said, no, this is a drought. We don't, we don't find people, we don't do, you know, so. But I think they, you know, I think all areas of town could benefit from, from that. And I think the city would ultimately benefit. So I would propose raising that so we can move the needle. So I'd like to hear other thoughts on that. Thank you.
And we'll go to Mayor Protim and then Councilor Rosen.
Cool. The, the first question I had was the, the first step for the businesses was an audit that would be covered up to $5,000?
Yes.
What are in these audits? I mean, would one really cost $5,000?
I would imagine that it could possibly on a full shopping center. But for example, if Longhorn Steakhouse was just doing an audit, probably it would not cost that much. It would be, I would think that the shopping centers, if they're doing full irrigation audits, they're doing the full, you know, if you're taking something the size of the Village and doing an audit, it might be up to that point.
Do you think, do you think they'll take us up on it?
I would hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, because I think, you know, we're going to hopefully be talking about water rates too. And I think part of it is carrot and stick. And I'd rather do some really great carrots with the understanding that at some point.
Okay.
Next year, Austin is going to raise rates.
Yeah.
More than likely that, we've already been told that, that in 2024, the rates will likely go up. So any, either way, whatever we do, the city will probably be looking at some kind of rate changes as well. So I, I think that they're our biggest water users. When we were talking about some, a group of, between them and the multifamily, the apartments, when we're talking about being 63%, and multifamily would fall into the commercial category as well in, in the, from a rebate perspective. We want them to take this up and we want them to, you know, reduce usage as much as possible.
Would it make sense for us just to pay for them? Because there's not really that many.
I still think it's, I mean, we are, the city would be paying for them. I mean, it's covering 100% of the cost. But I don't, I don't want us to be the ones arranging them and doing them. I want them wanting to do those.
Okay, fair. Yeah, the, the other one was just about the solar. I thought, I thought the Sunset Valley rebate was $3,500 for some reason, but it's three?
It's been 3,000 for a long time. And so, and we haven't had anybody take advantage in the last couple of years. I would say that if you are looking to do solar, you need to do it now because Austin Energy will be changing their rebates in January. They will, that dollar for what Austin Energy's doing is going to go away. And it's going to change in January.
They're going to do away with it?
I don't know what it's changing to, but it's definitely, we've been told that it's going to change in January.
More likely to go down?
That's a possibility.
That makes, so I, who, who has solar here? You got solar? Well, you're good. So on next door, people were talking about $500 electricity bills. Last month, ours was $90, $90. And it is very comfortable in our house. Like, we want to be mindful of the, of like what ERCOT says. But, you know, we're not sweating in there, we're not turning it off. And our, our meter is like sitting right there. We're not pulling, we're not sending, it's just the middle of the day. I, I do not know what to do to get more people to, to jump on it. I don't know if it's like an aesthetic thing or?
I do not know.
But, yeah, I was saying we should offer more for that because it's, they practice, they pay for themselves so much already. And I guess you just can't get people to do it. And, but we'll always keep ours, you know, as long as we have the money, we're not going to do away with them like Austin Energy.
No, we've kept ours and then we've kept ours. I mean, I know that Austin Energy's has gone down over time. I think it was much higher at one point and now it's gone down to where it is right now. But yeah, the city has kept theirs. I mean, I think the argument has always been on the solar end is that the city's not an energy provider. So it's more of a, we want you to do this because it's a good thing kind of thing. It's not necessarily that the city's saving money from that, but it's a good thing to do and encourage.
Yeah, okay. That's it, thank you. Real, real quick, we talked about commercial audits. Is there anything for residential? Are there any programs that we could incentivize people to have a water audit that would make recommendations for their site and then pay for the cost of those? Because I think that might be another way of getting people to take access to the rebates is if there's a professional audit, you know, like they'd come in and say, here are recommendations and here are the rebates you could qualify for that the city offers. And if there's, if we pay for that, right, or refund that. I just don't know if that's something that exists.
I think, I want to look.
But that can be a follow-up. I just said, maybe a question is saying, you know, if we're doing a commercial, why not do it for residents? If there's such a?
There used to be a, I think it was, it's mostly, it's on the residential end, they focus on irrigation. Household things generally, people, I mean, you've got to go out of your way to get things that aren't water efficient in your home. Like to get a washing machine that's not high efficiency nowadays, it's really kind of hard. Same thing with like toilets. They, they all have kind of standards, kind of flush, kind of ranges now. You can get a little bit better, but you can't get really high volume usage. But I know on the irrigation, let me check on the irrigation. And I think at one time there was a program to do irrigation audits on residential properties. And that's where, that's where the majority of changes, I mean, because outdoor water use is such a big thing and that's what's so effective. But I can definitely look at the irrigation audits.
Councilor Rosen Garden and then Councilor Metecos.
I looked on our website to find out if there was any information about gray water or purple pipe. And there's nothing. I even checked with Austin and all they have is water that is reclaimed. And you have to be close to their pipe, that is reclaimed water, in order to utilize it. And if you're not close to their reclaimed water pipes, you can't. And I know this discussion was up because I've gone to many Texas Water Development Board meetings, et cetera. Whatever happened with that?
So that's a good question because that is, if we look, there are five kind of goals basically that we kind of put together regarding the water conservation program. One of those is, the first goal was the effective commercial and residential rebate. And then an educational program to go with those, those are basically hand in hand. Goal three was fixing and making sure city facilities are also water efficient and working property. But goal five was researching and looking at reused systems. So that is still something that's in there, but we don't have the information at this time to look at gray water use. And it does require, you know, like you said, it does require certain systems. For example, for a home, it's usually better if it's built into it. Trying to retrofit that is very hard. We have looked at, there's things from gray water use to effluent recycling. There's a lot of things that are coming out now to kind of look at those different uses. A lot of times they will require kind of separate systems to be put in. So from a residential perspective, it's probably a really hard thing to do as far as gray water use. From a city perspective of looking at some other opportunities, that may be something that could be explored in the future, but we're just not there yet.
Well, I was thinking because if, if someone bought an older home in the city and build a new house, that's the time to do it, but we don't even offer it.
But we don't offer that right now. And I, it's, I don't know, Jared, do you have any information on some of those gray water regulations?
Councilor Mr. Ray Reshovin, I was involved in negotiating some zoning cases involving the city requiring the developer to do purple pipe as part of the benefits package in those zoning cases. I can tell you that there was a lot of pushback from developers to doing it. The main issue always seemed to me to be the fact that you basically have to plum the building twice. I mean, once for the potable water and once for the gray water. And so while the city is responsible for spreading the mains, if you will, of the gray water, there's still a reluctance to, part of builders to build that second plumbing system within the house.
And the other part of that is, is that I know there was always some concern because we are over the recharge zone about, about the use of gray water. So it, it's just going to need a lot more work to make that possible.
Councilor Metecos, I saw your hand raised. And then just as a note, we'll go, after your question, we'll go to our time certain items. So we'll pause the discussion on this one and then go to our budget item before we resume this one. If you want to wait, you can. Okay. Yeah, and I took a couple of notes too from Councilor Reitz. You know, one note was raising the lawn to native from 6,000 to some amount. So we can consider that as we're going through the budget. And for Mayor Protim, which is raising the, the solar from 3,000 to some amount also. There's another discussion point that, that was raised as well. All right, so council, we'll, we'll go back to this item once we've completed our remaining two agenda items. We're going to move to our time certain item, which is item number 12, presentation discussion and possible staff direction on the fiscal year 2024 proposed budget. And they'll begin with an update, updated presentation just to account for the changes since the last time we visited this back in August. And the city administrator is going to go through that and then we'll start diving in. Hand it over to the city administrator this time.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. All right, so we did create a new presentation today. It's much shorter than the presentation we gave at the last meeting, but just wanted to highlight some of the, some of the changes from the revised budget that was posted on August 28th as an update to the mayor's budget filed August 11th. So the projecting ending fund balances, there were no, there were no changes. Again, these are just projected ending fund balances. We'll have, you know, and make any, excuse me, ending budget adjustments. So the revenue overall, there was, the overall revenue is now $14,886,821. That does include transfers, so that's, that's total revenues, which is both external revenues and transfers. There was a decrease, you can see about 3,700. There was only an actual decrease in 1,500 in revenues, which was a, there was a, there was an error in, in a miscellaneous revenue line item, so we removed that. But also some of the, some salary numbers did decrease in some of the other funds. And so then that decreased the need for transfer. So for example, the utility fund, the salaries actually went down just a little bit, which then decreased the utility subsidy transfer, which is a, which is a revenue. So the expenses, they did increase by a total of 112,000. So the, now, the new expense number for the total budget, including transfers, is 13,524,000. And so again, that, the email that was sent out to you last week. So there was an error in workforce. Workforce is the system that, the component of OpenGov that we currently use to make sure all of our salary and benefit and other compensation line items are correct. It's, it's a way to keep up with it because as you know, there's, you know, some, some employees are funded, or some positions are funded by multiple funds, right? So you create, you create the positions, the salaries and the benefits within workforce. There was a number that was unfortunately static rather than pulling from workforce. So there was an error in the police department salaries. Budget and finance did have some questions when we were reviewing the budget, asking, oh, I can't believe salaries haven't increased anymore even though we added two new positions. That was, that was the reason, because of that error in workforce. So we have, have corrected that. Overall though, so when it's this orange or golden color, that, that highlights that there's been a change. So overall, the expenses for salaries have increased by 284,000 from this current year budget. So I believe it was five, 5.3%, now it's, it's 8.8%. And so that was the only expense category that increased. So total expenses, non-transfers is 10.2 million, which is an actual decrease of 6% from this current year budget. But that's due to projects, spending less on projects for fiscal year '24. So again, all fund detail page here. We already discussed the change in the general fund, which is where the PD salaries show up. There were some changes, some very minimal changes in the utility fund, the crime control and the crime control fund, and also the venue fund. Those were all salary related, and the drainage fund. So those were all salary related. So the actual surplus or proposed surplus is 1.362 million. So there's still a significant surplus in the budget. The FY '24 proposed CIP projects are the same. You'll see that for sixty-one oh seven, what's currently in the budget, even the one that was posted, the revised budget posted on August 28th, still has the thirty thousand dollar number. And now we have some updated task orders that, that show an increase to that project. I'll get to that slide in a moment. This is the CIP project timeline. I thank you to Carolyn for putting this together. I think this will, this will help the seat. This was also in the backup as well. But this just shows the projected timeline for our projects. You can see the Savannah Trail, which is at Upper Cougar Creek, and the Home Depot sidewalk project will be doing permitting in the fall, bidding in January, February, and then construction will be occurring spring and summer of next year. Country White Lane and potentially the Brody Water Line, if that, if that goes through, construction in the first couple of months of 2024. Reimagine Brody. This will just be a planning and design project. We won't even move forward to, to permitting or bidding. But with the planning and design, then we can move forward with project proposals for fiscal year 25. Same with the City Hall Gathering Center. And then the city facility solar, we'll discuss that in more detail in a moment. But we did receive one bid back, so we could get started with permitting and then construction as soon as the fiscal year begins. And then the Storage Art upgrades and the Public Works Building trail and safety improvements. Those, those can, we can begin work on those as soon as we approve the budget. And so with the changes in the various funds, this did change the projected ending fund balances. The general fund would projected to end fiscal year 24 at nine point, about nine point five million. So it has, will have gone down about three percent. The crime control, again, we received council direction to not have a fund balance really in that, or to have a minimal fund balance in that fund, so that has stayed the same. So overall, the, the total, the total decrease from the projected fiscal year 23 ending balance to fiscal year 24 is seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, so down two point eight percent. So we were just discussing the water conservation rebate program expansion. Again, the, the staff recommendation is to allocate a hundred thousand of the one million committed funds. We can always come back with budget adjustments during, during the fiscal year. However, you know, council, you know, it's, it's, it's your direction to how much you want to put in the budget that's adopted next meeting. So we'll, we'll go back to that after this agenda item and agenda item number 13, we'll, we'll return to the rebate program expansion. So there was an increase in the sixty-one oh seven Brody Lane task order. That task order, the old task order was thirty thousand and the new is forty-eight thousand five hundred. So there were estimates for the landscaping, but now the task order includes the actual cost of the landscaping. But most of that increase is due to the cost of plating the property. So both sixty-one oh seven and sixty-four oh one Brody Lane are not platted. And so as a part of the cost of plating the property, you know, surveys, surveys have to be done. So the engineers have put together the estimates of what it would cost to plat both properties. So if, if council wanted to proceed with plating both properties at the same time, which really does make sense, the, the cost is included, or the increased cost moves that sixty-one oh seven project from thirty thousand to forty-eight thousand five hundred, so about eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand, and then an additional fifteen thousand to get sixty-four oh one Brody platted. And there would be, of course, the engineering work, the surveys, and then we would have to go through the public hearing process to get those properties platted. The solar bid, we did receive one bid, one responsive bid. Yeah, only one for the, for the solar project. So we only had a.
Four, fifty, forty thousand dollar place?
Fifty. We had a fifty thousand dollar placeholder in the, in the mayor's budget that was filed. The actual costs were a hundred and eighty-one thousand for the installation of solar at the police department. It's a much more robust system. The police department uses a lot more electricity, so the system has to be a lot more robust. And then only sixty-two thousand for the installation of solar at the Public Works Building. And the information was provided in the, in your packet from the bid and how much projection of electricity it would generate for both buildings. I believe for the police department, it would generate an eighty-nine percent. And for Public Works, it would generate eighty-seven percent of, of the electricity. So these are amounts that we have, they just haven't been incorporated into, into the budget. And then of course, any other council priority projects or items can be added before the budget is adopted. Any questions?
Real quick question. On the, the rebates program, we currently have funding in the budget for existing rebates. This would be expanding it, so adding additional funding. So just as a note that the current rebates are essentially, we have money set aside for them like we do every year. There's potential to add more to, with the expectation that some commercial, hopefully a lot more users would take advantage of it. And that's where that, that would come from. But that's from our committed funds, so it would just be money that we've already set aside for that purpose. Just a quick note, you know, one of the things I want to highlight, and I know this is the, it's something that Budget and Finance didn't recommend. It was something that I am passionate about. With regards to the solar, it is a high cost, you know, in terms of both the PD building, the Public Works building. There is however, you know, an estimate from the, the bid that includes when that would essentially be repaid, you know, which I think is one of the things that happened in the, the intervening years since we've had the solar installation on this building is that the price of solar has gone down quite a lot and the efficiency of the systems has increased. And so both of those things are in our favor, but even accounting for that, if we paid for it upfront, upfront, we probably, we would not see a return on that for at least 10 years, right? That's the estimate that's included. But these are 20-year systems, so there, and we've had our current system for 13 years now. It's, it's paid for the amount that the city invested in initially, although we'd also supplemented that, I think largely with a grant. The, the City Hall one was, had a big grant portion. So staff is going to be looking at what additional things could offset some of the costs, you know, whether that is rebased through Austin Energy, if there are any grants through the, you know, the Inflation Reduction Act or the Infrastructure Acts that have been passed to take advantage of, to reduce the cost, so that our portion may be similarly proportional to what we paid the initial one. Even though, you know, if we did have to pay for it outright, I think there's still economic justification, just in terms of a 10-year return potentially being enough for us to say, you know, the benefit is twofold. One is we save money over long-term, but also there's this, you know, we're having a lower impact on our environment and I think modeling for our residents who might also be interested in solar as well. So that's just a note on that, but that's information that's in the backup. And council can decide if they want to keep the placeholder value that's in there while we pursue additional ones. We'll have more information, I think, to bring back hopefully by the September 19th meeting on that. Or we can keep the placeholder and continue to explore that. But it's also one of these things that we can quickly turn around as a project because it's, you know, bids come in and we can do that. So those are two notes I just wanted to highlight there. But turning over to council now, as we look at other items that you wanted to investigate or talk about more or other priority projects that were not included in the current budget that you want to bring back. In the process for this, it'll be similar to what I'd like to do last year that we did was, we'll, we'll keep a tally or a list of those items that council wants to bring back. And then on September 19th meeting, we'll have that list and we'll review them. And we can decide if we want to fold those into the budget. And, you know, of course, staff will have estimates that, that we can kind of quickly turn around for the adopted budget when we move forward with adopting it. If we need more time, we, we can schedule additional meetings as well. So keep that in mind as you're making items for bringing back. Well, of course, the staff will take notes of that so that we can keep that running list of things that we want to talk about as we look forward to budget adoption time. So Mayor Protam and then Councilor Rosen.
So the, about the 20-year life on these systems, you know, the, a lot of the cost is the labor that goes on these, like just electricians at your house for multiple days. And that is something that you don't really have to, so you're going to just be paying in 20 years for new panels and the, the labor to put those in. And they're kind of just plug and play. And the price of panels is, you know, keeps going down. So also consider that, that's not, even with inflation, that's not what you're going to have to pay again in, in 20 years. So I said it before, I think it's a great investment. The thing about providing eighty-nine percent of the electricity or eighty-seven, whatever the numbers were, I'm pretty sure the way that Austin Energy has it worked is you can only lower your bill by eighty percent because they still need to pay for infrastructure and stuff like that. So I'm sure that's in this backup, I hope it is. Yeah. So even though we're, you know, knocking eighty-nine percent out, we're still paying for 10% that we're not using. If you're ever curious, there's like three great ways that it reduces your, your bill. I'll tell you later. I, I should know this by now, but how, so sixty-one oh seven, I was gearing up for like the work that I would have to do to get that going and then there it is. So how did they get on there?
I can't remember exactly. I think it was just in discussions regarding sixty-one oh seven about moving kind of that project forward. And like you said, the big changes were looking at the plating because neither of the properties are platted and what we had proposed before and what we have now. And so this is for sixty-one oh seven, this is just basically planning. There will be nothing constructed next year.
No, but I'm.
But it gets you that.
That's one of the hardest parts, is right there.
It then gets you that much closer so that in FY25, hopefully there's, we've got a project ready to take off.
Okay. And part of the planning is?
The sixty-one oh seven is the trailhead and possible parking.
Parking.
So that's, that's what that is right there.
Awesome.
And it will be a fully platted property, so.
So when we, when we were adopting the open parks and open space plan, council clearly identified that we want to prioritize these projects, not all at once, but based on council direction, right? So the Upper Cougar Creek, Savannah Trail, that's our first project. But during the conversation, there was also, I think, in terms of next priorities, a discussion about the sixty-one oh seven because the committees have been looking at that one, but also the City Hall Gathering Space, which was another one that came up more from the committee side because the CED and Planning, Environmental and Arts Commission have been, the, the Gathering Space here behind City Hall has been a priority. I went ahead and include those in the mayor's budget and they also were part of the, the discussion with Budget and Finance. That's essentially how they, they came to the budget is a proposed project. Council could of course say, you know, we don't want to move forward with those at this time, we want to prioritize something else and repurpose that money to something else. Again, though, one of the things I'm cautious about and why I wanted staff to put together a visualization of this is that having too many concurrent projects is going to mean that none of the projects get done in a timely fashion. And so I want to make sure that we're not overburdening our staff, our engineers, you know, that the time it takes, you know, for these running these projects. We also have the regular operations and services that would drive the city. And so I think this fits nicely with, you know, the staff availability, given that we have engineering and MENDs participating in the, in the early planning stages. That lets us focus on the, the act of construction projects, you know, for, you know, the, the Home Depot and for the Savannah Trail when we get to them, so the staff can, you know, focus their time appropriately. But those two projects I thought were, you know, certainly something we could move forward with in the planning stages. That's, that's kind of response for.
No, I'm super psyched to see it on there. So thanks.
Yeah. So the reimagine Brody, obviously this is our most, you know, ambitious project. It will also involve the, you know, the greatest amount of planning and also, you know, stakeholder engagement, especially with the shopping centers, but obviously our residents as well, they will be impacted by it. So we'll be working closely with engineers and staff that we have and, and MEND to go about how we do the public engagement process for planning for the reimagine Brody project. Sixty-one oh seven, that is a lot, you know, that's a lot smaller scale, so there won't, you know, there's not going to be a public engagement process necessarily for that. That was done with the Parks and Open Space Plan that came up with the plan for that, for that parcel. There will be a public engagement process, especially for our residents and our committees that are interested in what the, what is feasible and what the community wants for outside City Hall. What we want to see, you know, do we want to incorporate some of the ideas that didn't make it in Upper Cougar Creek? Do we want to see, you know, like a labyrinth or a, a nature playscape or something? You know, what, what does the community and our committees and volunteers, what do they want to see out here behind City Hall? And what is feasible? So we'll be working with, you know, our engineers and with MEND, but we will have a public engagement process for that. And then based on those, based on what's feasible, based on what the public feedback is, then we can decide what if, what and if the project proposals for behind City Hall would look like for fiscal year 25. And the same with reimagine Brody.
Councilor Rosen.
There were a couple of things. Now, on the solar panel.
Microphone.
On the solar panels, I did get the utility bills for the police building and for the Public Works Buildings. I wanted to work on that. And Councilmember Johnson asked previously why more people don't have solar panels. At the time that I investigated solar panels, I asked two professors in our neighborhood. One of them said, absolutely, it's a no-brainer. I asked the other one, he said, absolutely not, that doesn't make any sense. And so I went and did, got three bids. And with what it was going to cost, even with the government subsidy, it was going to be close to twenty-five thousand dollars. And my utility bill is a hundred and sixty-five dollars. You divide that into the cost and it would take me 12 and a half years to recoup my money. It just didn't seem like a good investment because that money could be making money meanwhile versus being up on the roof. Plus the maintenance. If you allow the solar panels to get dirty and you don't constantly maintain them on a yearly basis, then its efficiency goes down dramatically. So that is what, why not everybody has solar panels at this time. And then, so for us as a city, I've been told by different residents, sometimes you can always look at return on investment. But yet we're dealing not with our money, we're dealing with taxpayers' money. And we promised to be vigilant on guarding that money and, and using it wisely. So. Next, one of the things we talked about is open space planning. And I'd like to know, out of the seven hundred thousand that we allocated, I believe, two years ago, how much of that is left?
So as, as it stands right now, we would be, I think there's about four, four hundred, four hundred and sixty thousand that was left from this fiscal year. And the proposal is to allocate all of that towards the phase one of Upper Cougar Creek. So that would be, that current would be depleted. Now, council could allocate, because we are predicting there will be a surplus this year, so we could allocate more towards that fund with a surplus from this current, that we're going to end this current fiscal year with.
Okay. No, I would, I would definitely agree that we need to get one project going and done as quick as possible. And that's phase one, Upper Cougar Creek.
Yes.
And then the next question is, because I just, you were going to say something, Carolyn?
Switched around, sorry.
Okay. Resident asked me today if we are doing anything to mitigate, mitigate for fire wise from the trails because we've got all these dry trees right behind our houses. And my explanation to him was, yes, tonight, we are going to be talking about hiring two more people in Public Works who we were told are going to be working in the winter time, cleaning up the trail area to help mitigate a lot of that. Because I remember when you kept saying that, yes, we do trail work in the summertime, but it sure would be nice to have them in the winter time to do more of that. Is that correct?
I mean, we won't just only be doing, you know, wildfire mitigation, but yes, we can, we will be able to increase wildfire mitigation and dead tree removal through that. And we will also, yeah, that's something we would like to work on going into the future now. There is sometimes an expectation that these areas are going to turn into no deadwood landscaped kind of areas. And that is not going to happen because there's a certain kind of balance we try to maintain in these areas of, of natural habitat. So I don't want to set an expectation that things are going to be like landscaped kind of quality, but it will be, we will be removing some deadwood throughout those areas. Generally, what we've done in the past, we definitely go through the fire break areas that are along the edges and, and kind of clear those. And then we usually use the trails also as that fire break and go, depending. And then we usually use the trails also as that fire break and go, depending on how much staff time and the people we have to work on it, so many X number of feet around the trail and try to clear those. So those are kind of where we are, how we do those kind of processes in the green spaces.
Okay. And then regarding Art Fest, one of the projects that was brought to us, and I do not believe it is included in our discussion, but one of it was about storing Art Fest artwork. And the recommendation was to do an extension on the garage, doing a cover extension, so that you'd have shade on the concrete, so we're not increasing impervious cover, and then moving the Kubotas out of the garage, out into, on the driveway. And then putting the artwork in the garage. It's kind of something that a coworker years ago said, "I don't understand when people put lawn equipment in the garage and have their $40,000 vehicle on the driveway." So same goes here. I can't believe we would take Kubotas out of the garage, have them setting out on the driveway, and then have Art Fest artwork in the garage. A less expensive solution is a storage shed. And a thought, because I know that some of the art pieces are pretty tall or pretty big, like the entry sign, so Karen, you can weigh in, is a, and I know what storage sheds look like, and I know that you had rodent problems the last time, but that's a very simple solution. You put bait stations around the outside. But if you put a storage shed bigger at the triangle up by Tony Berger, which is our property, you have all the art stuff near the Art Fest, and you don't have to do all this driving back and forth, it's right there where you need it. To me, that seems like a logical idea. So that might be an idea that council considers as a future priority project also. And that's what I have.
I was gonna answer that. So this year, we aren't proposing the extended roof or anything like that. The only thing we're proposing is the fence and gates and the trail kind of relocation around the area, so that's not, we're not moving anything at this point. That is definitely a discussion that we can have regarding where storage can be, but it would be probably more of an FY '25 project that we would be looking at at this point.
Thank you. And the storage, where's the Art Fest items right now?
They're in this building, they're over there. Well, most of them are here, some of them are being stored offsite.
The large ones, you mentioned, the large ones.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Most of them are stored offsite. Pretty much every...
Pretty much everything else is stored here at City Hall.
So then what we would need as a council to make a decision for the future is to know what that offsite storage cost is, and what is this costing us? In other words, if there's a spot that is being used as storage and we're not able to use it for something that is less expensive, meaning for storing staff, for having staff there, and then we have to build another building because of something else, we have to weigh the pros and cons.
Right.
Got it?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Young?
I have a question and a comment. The question is, on the CIP project timeline, you've got city storage upgrades and public works building trail and safety improvements happening in October and November? And I may have missed this, but have we already allocated funds for this from this year's budget, or are those coming out of next year's budget?
The storage yard upgrade, both are coming out of next year's budget. They're not, yeah, they're not coming out of this year's budget. And, you know, they, I would say these are, these could, these could take longer, you know, we want to get started with the work, but we have some more research to do, and we have more council discussion to do. We know we want to make security upgrades, we know we want to get a camera installed, but we still, we still have a lot of work to do to figure out the storage yard permitting process. But there are some, there are some things, based on the last discussion we had, that we want to implement now, which are the security upgrades, including the camera.
I was gonna ask if your timeline for construction on the storage yard is a little optimistic.
Yeah, that one I would say is optimistic. The other, I think we can move forward with fairly quickly.
Okay. And the comment I had was about solar, and I think Mayor Protem used the right word, which is that this is an investment. We're at the point where solar is basically the cheapest kind of power to produce, cheaper than everything else, cheaper than natural gas, cheaper than whatever other form. And that's only going to get better as the technology improves.
Right.
And we can already see from the estimates we have that while there's a longer timeline to pay for this, we already have the example of what we have here, that it pays for itself over time. And again, as Rob pointed out, you know, that the cost, if we replace these in 20 years, is not the cost we have to do today. So I think that solar is, and it's been proven many times in many places at this point, that this is a very good investment for us to make.
Councilor Reese?
A couple of comments and a new project proposal. First of all, I think our revenue from sales tax is too optimistic. I don't think we'll meet our revenue target this year. We have to come in over $600,000, and we'll actually have clarity next month on it. So I would probably suggest we reduce that revenue by $100,000, and I think that would be better. I am concerned about, you know, if you look at the country, the credit card debt is rising, and I think that will curtail some retail spending in the next year or two. And so I do have some concerns about that. Two, the City Hall planning. Well, I don't know if you, if many were around when we did the City Hall, when we built the City Hall, and suddenly the Villas, residents in the Villas came out in force, very, very concerned about numerous things.
Are you saying the police building?
I mean, police, yes, yes, Police Department. And they came out and in force, and very concerned about the impact on their neighborhood. And so before we invest a lot of money in hiring a consultant to planning, I suggest we do some community outreach with our, with the Villas, because they will be the most affected. And see their thoughts. What I would hate is that we go through this process, we spend a lot of money, and then everything, you know, people get upset about it. What I do find is, what I have found, is in my years of working on the Upper Cougar Creek project, I worked on that project for three years, and I found that what our residents in the retail, it's okay for, we have visitors in the retail, but we like our private spaces, our residential area, we like that to be private. And so anything that promotes a huge amount of visitors to that area with, and I'm not sure there's a lot, a connection to retail spending at that point. I, that would have to be really explored if there, if we had some type of, whatever it is, a labyrinth or whatever, would that create so many visitors that they would then go to the retail center, or would they go down through our trails or whatever? All of that would need to be explored. I am not convinced that it would result in huge retail increase. So that's just my thought, just to be careful about. Third, you know, I've been an advocate for pickleball, and so, and I have looked at every property in this city, like, where can we put this? And we thought about City Hall, but it's not going to work, it's too loud, the Villas, et cetera. They already came out, you know, they came out already with that. I thought about 6107, but, you know, with the sinkhole, the parking, that doesn't work. So I have another suggestion. If we can pull up the triangle area? Google Maps? And pickleball is one of the fastest growing sports, and as a community, we offer great passive recreational activities with the hiking, biking, that type of thing. But we don't really offer anything that's organized, and the benefits of pickleball are outstanding, particularly for seniors and for families. So I would encourage us to look at that. So now, if, can we zero in on the Master Horgan Trail street? At the very end of the street, that is, it is, you cannot exit to 290 there. Now, wouldn't that street right there, it's about 45 feet across, what if you put a pickleball court right there? One, the noise wouldn't bother anyone, you have plenty of parking, and you could, you know, it might bother the farmer's market, but you could close it off from 9 to 1 on Saturdays. And that, to me, looks like, okay. It's not next to a school, it's not next to any homes, it's easy parking, wouldn't bother anybody, and that looks to me like a viable spot. Thoughts? So anyway, that's my project. I, and I would, so I'm proposing that we allocate $100,000 to that. I think a pickleball court is much less, but I have found that with the city, I am always, always surprised on the cost, so, yep.
We'll go to Councilor Medikus and then Councilor Rosengard. So, Councilor Medikus, do you want to speak?
So I'd like to propose something that has already come up about the community with pickleball, that might be a little bit more comfortable than the hot pavement at the end of Horgan Trail, and that is, in the future, planning for the uplands, that the pavilion be converted into, we do a pavilion there, and that that have markings, so it can be pickleball when it's not being used. And so then you have shade, and you have some grass around you, and it's multi-use. So it's not just for pickleball, because those nets can be on wheels and be pulled across and be retracted when they're not being used. So that was a suggestion that was actually in the Parks and Open Space Plan, so I'd like to see that.
Councilor Rosengard?
I was just gonna verify that she's talking about putting it on the hot pavement, and the answer is yes. That's exactly what she was talking about, but, okay. But that's thinking outside the box, I can appreciate that.
All right. Councilor Young, or did you have your...
I was gonna, I was gonna say something in support of what Councilmember Medikus said, which is we should think about this in terms of how does this fit in the rest of the open space plan? As opposed to having like little one-offs that we do, right? I think you brought up a point before about having community feedback, and I think we had a really good process with both the comprehensive plan and the open space plan, where we had that kind of community feedback, and we put it together in one big plan. I'm in favor of pickleball, I like the suggestion Councilmember Medikus made, but I think it should be part of the overall plan.
Mayor Protem?
I never in a million years thought that this would be relevant, but the company I work for, we play soccer in like underused spaces and it's on asphalt, and so if someone threw down, "Hey, there's this end of a road and you could play there," we would take it immediately. And so I don't know if it has to be a, I don't know if it has to be like a whole thing, just painting some lines on a, I'm gonna get some looks from Chief, but like throw down some lines on the road and just say, "Hey, if you bring your nets, here you go, here's some space, and you're not gonna get kicked out," I think would be a great, great spot. And also, Joe Coysen, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, he thinks that, he, it's not this easy, but he said, "We should turn Bed Bath &amp; Beyond into an indoor pickleball arena," which I think is a great opportunity for a private company to come in and do, and make a ton of money, and it would probably bring in sales tax. But in the meantime, I mean, it's only hot 10 months out of the year. It's only, it's only too hot, maybe six months out of the year, five, but I think it would be great just throw it down there.
Real quick, I am taking notes, but also, so we can add that as one of the bring-back projects, but I was gonna just follow up real quickly on another point that you made, which regarding the sales tax revenue, because I do think we need to be conservative with our revenue. We basically are flat this year compared to earlier. I will point out, though, that the current, or the chart that's in the packets that we get that shows our sales tax revenue, does not include crime control and prevention. So when you add crime control and prevention, that's essentially where we get our surplus. It's, so, so, so we are, we're gonna make about $7.2 million this year, but that's only if you exclude kind of control and prevention. If you included it, we're gonna be at $7.6 million, which is what we were essentially last year. So we are, we do have that buffer of about $450,000 already built into the budget. We're, if we, if we, if we're flat again next year, we're gonna get $7.6 million when you include crime control prevention. So just as a...
Yeah, we may end slightly under, you know, there's some months where we're over year-to-date from actual, some months we're under, so we may come in just slightly under year-to-date actuals. However, we did budget conservatively for this current fiscal year, and we're keeping that flat, we're keeping the budgeted amount.
Yes, so the sales structure...
We're gonna come in higher, this year, we're gonna come in, you know, quite a bit higher than we, than our budgeted.
Yeah, because it's basically, we're budgeting for $7.2 million. Our total sales tax, and when you include crime control and prevention, is about $7.6 million. So we could be more conservative and reduce that to $7.1, but we, we're already gonna come in with a surplus this year, so that we're talking about essentially two different numbers when we're looking at the chart that's in our city staff reports versus what our sales tax, so, all right. Councilor Reese?
I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. So, and yes, it is, this has been a brutal summer, and no one wants to think of doing outside pickleball at that time, in the heat, and, but most pickleball courts are in the sun, and so this, so it doesn't, that's not really relevant, I don't think. The idea of the pickleball courts being in the pavilion in the uplands has, I'm quite concerned about that, because it is close to two schools. Pickleball is loud, not only from the balls hitting the paddles, but it's loud because in a very confined space, you have four people playing, and if you have, if you have two courts, you have eight people playing, and that gets noisy with all of their comments, they're having fun, and all of that gets noisy. I know the park, Jocelyn, that's not too far from here, had a pickleball court, and they've now taken that away, I understand. And so, and I'm sure it is because, you know, people were parked in front of their yards, and they were playing pickleball, and it disturbed their peace. And that is what I would be hugely concerned about, is the location of the two schools next in that area. The Austin Montessori. Austin Montessori. So you have two schools that are close. Now, AISD might have great soundproofing, I don't know. I'm guessing Austin Montessori looks like they're built in old buildings, old homes, and so I'm not sure what kind of soundproofing they would have. So I would be concerned about that. So that was my suggestion, that was the only place in the entire city that, and that just came to me just the other day, it's like, oh, what about that? So, and it wouldn't increase impervious cover.
All right, I lost track of who, Heather Henry's next, Councilor Rosengard?
I just wanted to say, I didn't say that I was against it, I just said hot asphalt this minute, I thought, and I remember the Art Fest one year when they were, they just got done doing crack seal, and shoes were being stuck to the pavement and so on. But that wouldn't be happening if you got that as an official pickleball court or soccer field, et cetera. And I think it's a smart use of something you already have, we're never gonna have a road going out, so it's a smart use. Good job.
So council, I do want to make sure that we have time for members of the public that wish to speak and give their input into the budget process as well. So if we can take a moment for that, we'll open up for members of the public that wish to speak to this agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor, Melissa Gonzalez, 26th Street, please. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna go ahead and lead, which was not my budget one, but I'm gonna lead with pickleball, because in honor of council discussion on this, I was in LA recently and on the Strand, which is their pedestrian sidewalk that's, it's in Mosad Beach and Manhattan Beach and that area. And they have houses right on the Strand, people live, and they had pickleball courts. So I sat there on the wall for a while, like this, and watched pickleball, because I wanted to have information and get... I wanted to have information and gather that, and it was, maybe... in someone's side yard, and I was sitting there watching and sort of cheering, and it goes into the strand, and in the strand, you have back and forth traffic, and I went to helpfully go get the ball, and, you know, potentially got run over by a bike, you know, it was like, it's, so if we're right there on a sidewalk, and the ball's gonna fly into 290, that's an issue, so you have to kind of think about, then you're, then you're building a wall to block that off, to do that, and, and they do use that to get in and out periodically for things like that, like we had with the pandemic and stuff like that, that, that does periodically open up. So that's all the concern, but the safety issue, that wouldn't have occurred to me, just sitting there doing it, is, you know, if you have a sidewalk, and the balls are gonna go somewhere, it's table tennis, really, it's, it's big table tennis, you know, on a massive scale with people sort of doing it, and so that was, that was just an interesting thing for me, but didn't watch them, sort of, because I'd never watched a pickleball game before, so, moving that aside. So it's, I do think you need to have it somewhere where the balls can go when they fly somewhere, because you just think about playing table tennis on a bigger scale, with bigger, with bigger mats, and they were running into the house, you know, with their mallets. Okay, so, much for that. Things that I would want to talk about in the budget. I applaud the mayor's efforts to get us solar. I am concerned about a single bid. I am, so I don't really trust the numbers, when we, when we're working off of a single bid, so I certainly hope that we got, we request a couple of extra bids, I know there's a process and everything, but I sure would like to have better numbers before we move forward. An interesting thing that I learned about solar, in doing our solar, is that you really want metal roofs, which is okay for us, but they don't tell that to people in the world at large, because if you can't clip onto a metal roof, you will, and you put holes in it, you will be destroying that roof and, and cutting the life of it, and none of the people who sell you solar will tell you that. I had to dig that out. So really, I don't think solar is very well-suited to anything besides metal roofs, especially when you're gonna do it again, you know, there's problems with that, because you really have to solve that issue, and I think that's an unethical thing that happens about solar, but, on the fact of that, some people, some accountants will tell you that you have a structure that you could also help write off your new roof, if you do that, so you have to talk to your accountant about that, we as a city couldn't say it, but those were all really interesting things about solar, that I learned in the process of doing solar. So, I'm glad that we have metal roofs now, that we're talking about doing it with, but encouraging people to do solar without a metal roof undercuts a lot of Mayor Potem's arguments, because then you really do have to redo it when you redo your roof, you know, and you have, if you have one of those shingle roofs, then that's more of an issue. Those are things that I learned in my process. And, the Austin Energy keeps changing the rules, people complain about changing the rules for what the cost will be, depending on what their needs are, so there's some concerns about that. So, so I don't know about all the pricing things that you sometimes do, I do, I do it. I have additional issue that I would like to, which is additional fencing for the Greenbelt, I think we have to have, I would like a placeholder for this. When we're over on Reese, a lot of the, I, I almost bought the land that the city bought, so I remember what it used to look like, which was to say, it had this long fence, where you're staring at 10 or 12 houses, a lot of that fence came down, so now those houses just walk into our property as a city, and when we were walking there, there's piles of firewood, and I have people who have firewood parties there, you know, like, where they're doing a little campfire, and those are kinds of things that cause me concern, because the, the creep of other people claiming, like the Austin-Montessori claiming the north end of Reese, those neighbors claiming that is their yard, you start to have this thing, well, we've been using it for 20 years, I guess it's our property now, you know, so those were the, those kind of easement issues caused me concern, not to mention the fire concerns about that. So I want a placeholder for some fencing, not because I want to be mean, but because I don't want to lose our property, you know, easement-wise, and I don't, and I want to be concerned about with these, because it's mowed over there, you know, like, they're using it like it's their yard, and I don't know where, where the actual line is, but my memory was, that some of the things they mow is our property, that's my memory, could be faulty, because it's been a while, because when I looked at that property. Let's see, what else do I have? Still want to get rid of the CIP, and I know that they want to do it when they change the software, but I still want to get rid of the CIP, because I think it inflates our budget. Gray water, to, to do that. So when we did the plan on the water plan that's on, that was on the website, I hope it's still on the website, we, we did look at, and put the recommendation in for that, and everything that everybody said, I want to reinforce, Katie was not in favor of it, and really, of us being over the recharge zone, the double plumbing, everything everybody said, we heard at that time, and that's why we didn't move forward on it. So, you know, I, I think we, we have accurate information, and there's good reason why it's just a bullet, and we did bullet it, because, well, in a perfect world, but it, it's very hard to develop that, given our situation, and, and especially then at the time we were built out, we weren't rebuilding. Other things? I think that's the bulk of my things, I think you guys did a really good budget, and I'm excited about it, and, oh, one other thing. So when you were talking about the, the audits, which I was on the committee that recommended it, I, I do, I'm in favor of all those things, but a link to action, every time we have something, people forget, they get busy, and especially when it's free, then they don't necessarily take action, so we're out $5,000 potentially, or, let's say, $1,000 to $5,000, and we don't have any link or commitment to action. So I don't mind reimbursing if we do something, you know, and I don't want to make it too onerous, so people won't do it, but there, I think there needs to be some sort of hook, where people are actually committed to the process and taking action on that audit, some way to do that, and I, and I don't have the perfect response, I'd love to offer it to you, but I don't, but I still think we need to, you know, to have a hook for people, when you get free money, then there's no need to do, to take the action, you know, and then, and then it gets lost on your desk. So, those are, those are my responses. Thank you all so much for all you do.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, can you bring up, well, maybe this is a question for Carolyn, but I know the, the area that, that was being spoken of, which is, you know, the new Valley Creek Park Trail, where it's in the, towards the, I guess, the south end of it, there's like a residential property that's in the city of Austin, that has a big field next to, and is that big field, the city of Sunset Valley?
So, I'm, I was kind of looking at that now, I think we'll need to kind of get that area surveyed, in order to, like, find the actual, we need to find the pins at least, and see where Sunset Valley is, and where their property ends.
Okay, but at least some portion of that field presumably is Sunset Valley, yeah?
It's Sunset Valley, yes.
Okay, yeah, and so, that's, that's another potential, if council wants to bring back an item to put fencing up around there. If you walk on the new section of Valley Creek Park, towards the south end of it, basically there's a, the city of Austin residents are right, their backyards are right there at the south end, and I know that there's been some use of that property in the past, and I'm not, I don't live down there, don't use the trail enough to know how active it is, but they basically use that field that's right next to, or maybe is on the city property, and there's, I know Councilmember Young expressed some concerns about firewood being kept there, which looked like there maybe have fires that, you know, for outdoor parties and things like that, and if that's on the city Sunset Valley property, that's something we want to work with them to obviously educate them, but also, more importantly, let them know that this is in the city Sunset Valley, and we want to make sure that it's used according to our rules. Mayor Potem?
We'll, we'll obviously talk more about it, they also gave us access, when we had to do work on that, which was, which was nice, I mean, they can't just use it because they let us use it once, but I think, just like a, like an agreement of, hey, we won't put up a fence, you won't have to look at a fence, if you just, you know, respect the fact that it's not your property.
Yeah.
And I think that will go a long way, but they're really nice folks, so...
Councilor Young?
It sounds like it would be a good idea to do a survey, so that we know exactly what the property line there is, before we decide on any other kind of actions, since there seems to be some uncertainty about that.
I can definitely get a price on surveying that property, or see what we got, if we got anything when we bought the property.
Okay.
I walk by that almost every day with my dog, and that, that, that pile of firewood, and there's, and there's another stack of wood in back of that, which I presume is on their property, but right now, both those things worry me.
Other members of the public that wish to speak at this time, this agenda item? All right, other topics that council wants to discuss, like, the ones that I noted down were potentially bringing back for our, our next meeting, looking at the cost of storage for Arts Fest, the large equipment we have for offsite, if we can quantify that, and then, looking at what the potential cost would be to store it onsite, and whether that's building something, or what, how we facilitate that. Looking at potentially whether we need to decrease revenue projections by an amount, which we can discuss if that's still needed, given, but we can bring back some more information just to say, you know, this is what the total revenue for sales tax, that includes crime control and prevention, and if we want to adjust that number, we can do that, which will lower our revenue projections. Bringing back a potential item for consideration of uplands pickleball courts, and what that would look like, and potentially having money set aside for that. And then the other two items with regards to the, the rebate programs, and potentially raising the rebates for those, that's what I have so far. Councilor Medikas?
So when you brought, to bring up the uplands again, once more, after 15 years, I would, if we have an excess of funds, then I'd like to see us add some planning to that. P&amp;D did talk about potential grant money to look at the planning for the uplands, and a grant writer, and I don't see that anywhere, I think that's somewhere in a new job description, but I would like to see us add some money for planning for the uplands, as spelled out in the Parks and Open Space Plan.
Okay, so we'll add that to the list as well.
And then I'd also like to clarify, the Arts Commission's storage is not for art.
It's for the big, the big signs that we built.
There are two big signs, one takes up the whole wall, Dakota, was it the whole front of that lobby?
Yeah, it was like, it's like eight feet tall, and it doesn't even fit through the door, so you can't really, like, tilt it and weave it through corners, it basically has to be straight shot in and then back out, so...
It's one solid piece, and so it is being stored offsite with the company that builds the frames that go in that, the structure, but what we have stored are mainly signs, we don't have art, so, so we don't need air-conditioned space, we didn't have air-conditioned space for that storage when it was at the city's offsite storage, where we used to keep the records down off of Manchak, and then the problem with the storage unit out here was, it got moved somehow, when Public Works was doing something with the garage, and it, it was a plastic storage unit, and so it got all discombobulated, and the rodents got in there, and that's what caused the mess there, so onsite storage somewhere would also work, doesn't need to be air-conditioned.
Further discussion on this item, and of course, we'll have, for the members of the public, where council will be revisiting this on September 19th, when we could potentially adopt the budget at that time, and we could schedule additional meetings as needed, if we wanted to review in more detail or workshop anything else, but we can bring back that list, and if council wants to, they can also provide any additional requests to myself and the city minister, so we can make sure that we account for that in between now and the next meeting as well, to make sure that we're, we have a holistic view of everything that we've been discussing. Great. Well, I really appreciate staff's time getting the budget prepared and ready, and thank you, council, for the work on this, and more work to come, but with that, if we're ready to move on, then we'll go on to agenda item number 13. This is again, a discussion item only tonight, presentation discussion and possible staff direction, on a proposed waterline extension project and assessment on Brody Lane South from Oakdale Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. So at the last meeting, August 15th, council did pass a resolution that directed city staff to enter negotiations with Albaterra Land Company, LLC, the potential buyers and the proposed developers for 6405 Brody Lane, about an agreement and assessment for a waterline extension, for the benefit of the property at 6405 Brody Lane, also for the benefit of the city's property at 6401 Brody, and to also work with legal. As staff worked with legal, legal did give us advice that there is a route we could take using Chapter 252 of the Local Government Code, Subchapter D, regarding improvements to water and sewer systems in certain municipalities. Legal did prepare a memo, and so, we would like to convene into executive session, so legal can, to, to review this option, and you, you all can ask any questions of legal that you may have regarding Chapter 252 and all that would entail, so, or sorry, it's Chapter 552.
So council, if we could get a motion to move into executive session at this time?
Motion to go into executive session.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're gonna move into executive session at 8:01, and we're reconvene, or come back to open session when we conclude, we won't not take any action in executive
And so we're not going to take any, we're not taking any action tonight on this agenda item, but we are giving direction to staff. To bring back as a next step, a resolution in our next meeting that is going to be a proposed assessment under subchapter D of section 552 of the Texas Local Government Code. Just to outline how this process will work, that resolution will be a chance for council to consider providing or moving forward with it, an assessment against the property that's located at 64 or 5 Brody Lane. That'll be the step one. If council moves forward with that resolution, then on our October 19th meeting, October 17th meeting, we'll be bringing back an ordinance, which would be the actual assessment. And the terms of that would be outlined in the ordinance. That will require public notice and that will, between the time the resolution is passed on our, if it gets passed on the 19th in the October 17th meeting, then we'll also be doing the required public notice and that'll be a public hearing on the 17th for the ordinance. If we decide to go forward with any assessment under subchapter D of section 552 of the Texas Local Government Code. So no action, but direction to staff to proceed with that, bringing back a resolution for our next meeting and potentially an ordinance at our October 17th meeting. All right? Any questions, any further direction from council? All right. All right. Thank you, staff, and thank you for members of the public here. And we're going to move on to our final item, which we've already previously met to discuss, which is agenda number 14. So kind of resuming that discussion. It's tied with our budget. I think what we'd want to do is, we could take potential action to actually adopt the ordinance tonight with the proposed rebate rates. There's an ordinance that's part of our agenda and our backup. The two questions that I think were raised were potentially increasing the lawn to native rebate from $6,000 to a higher amount to incentivize, as well as potentially increasing the rebate for solar, although I'm not sure if that was, I wrote it down, just in case we wanted to consider that as well. Do we, we don't also have to do the ordinance tonight? We could bring it back if there are further things that we wanted to explore, or if there's things that need additional research, such as any kind of, you know, audit, water audit for residential customers? Oh.
I do have that. So if you, there is, Austin Water does do free irrigation system evaluations if you meet certain criteria. And that is basically to be a very high-end water user. So if you're using more than 25,000 gallons in one month, or more than 20,000 gallons into consecutive months, that does qualify you for a free evaluation from Austin Water. And we do have some residents who actually do meet that criteria.
Okay. So council, or maybe council member Reitz, do you want to, is there a proposed amount that you want to raise that lawn to native reimbursement? Right now it's $6,000 from, proposed to be $6,000 from, up to $6,000 for 50% of the cost. From the City of Austin Valley, and there's an additional $3,000 that is by square footage by the city of Austin, is that correct? Which some properties, of course, may not qualify for that full 3,000 based on the square footage, but.
I'm just going to toss, I'll toss out 10,000.
That's exactly what I talked to Carolyn. I said, what if it's 50% up to 10,000? Then potentially a resident could get 13,000.
Right. Okay. Councilmember Medicas?
So I just want to, if I'm remembering correctly, Carolyn, on the, when we were talking about audits, water audits, we were really looking in plenty environmental at who are the, are the biggest water users in the city? And it's really commercial and us, the city. Not so much residential. So I think that's really an exciting opportunity for the commercial to do those audits, to see how they could possibly save some water, because that's where the bulk of the water's being used. I think that, that's, I don't know how effective it would be, maybe if we did audits for residential customers that had that higher usage, but for just your average residential use, I'm not so sure how effective that would be. And then I had a question on the backflow. The brass backflow attachments that you put on like your water faucet, I think we gave them out at a meeting or open house one time. Are those actually what's required when you're doing landscape watering?
No, that's a, it's kind of a vacuum breaker. Isn't that what it's called?
Yeah, it's actually like an anti-siphoning device is what that is. And all that is just, basically there's like a piece of flat rubber that goes in there that doesn't allow water to go the opposite direction. So, and it's if you leave your garden hose in a bucket of whatever, you just wash the car, or you're spraying pesticide with those hose and sprayers, which not really recommended. But if we had a break in our line, it could potentially suck the solution back into our public water system. Those are just to prevent that from happening. But it's not the same as like on your irrigation system.
No, yeah, you have a double check on the irrigation. Those are just like Dakota says, the anti, but what really you have to text are those high hazard backflows, which are RPZs. And they're smaller based on the size of the line. And that is actually something I met with TCAQ not long ago. We're going to be looking at those regulations on how the city is, you know, going to be enforcing those and how we're going to, which ones require, are going to require those inspections and which ones will not. So anything with rainwater harvesting where you're introducing a second dairy system, definitely would probably, we would probably be looking at requiring those. Also, we're going to need to start looking at the homes with wells, because they have auxiliary water sources as well. And so what is proposed in here for rainwater harvesting is that, because those do have to be inspected every year and you were hoping that they pressurize the system, we are also included in that rainwater harvesting rebate is the annual $100 or however much it is to cover the inspection for the backflows to make sure they're taking place. So that is also, I told, I forgot to mention that, that is a part of that rebate program as well as those backflow inspections.
So what about, did we also consider the installation of those systems? Because they're pretty complex even for a small landscape watering system. There are multiple chambers and they can't freeze or.
Yeah, so I would, for the rainwater harvesting system, the cost of the backflow would need to be included in the cost of that system.
Okay.
As far as irrigation, because double checks are not as expensive as the high hazard backflows are. They're, they are not, and you're not required to have irrigation either. But if you're going to go that rainwater harvesting route, it would be included as part of that system.
Okay. Oh, and the solar question. So I had, I did have our house assessed for solar a long time ago, but we are covered in trees.
Right.
And so we were told it really wouldn't be beneficial. So there are a lot of houses that might not be doing solar because of that. So I just wanted to bring that up. And then that's all I have.
Councilreitz?
So for commercial with this audit, and the audit would be in general around $5,000? Is that what you're saying?
It, it, some of them.
It could be.
Some of them would be smaller. I would imagine some of the smaller properties would have a much smaller cost associated with that. And I think on that one, I believe they can also, if it is more than that, Austin Water also has a rebate, I think, on the commercial end for that, for those rebates. Let me double check that real quick.
And so it's, so they would have to get it, but, and are we proposing that we reimburse them or not reimburse them?
It would probably be a reimbursement. It would be a refund.
Okay.
That is probably the easiest way to do that program.
So council, we could take action tonight to expand the city's water conservation rebate program to include both residential and commercial with the one change to expand the lawn to native from 6,000 as proposed to 10,000. So I think if we want to take that tonight, we could. You could also include in the motion to move money from the committed funds to fund the rebate program of the recommended amount of $100,000 or more. So that's, we could take action tonight to just clear those off of our agendas if you so desire. Or if we wanted to look into this more, we could bring this back as part of the budget discussion on the 19th. But I think we largely seem like we're ready to move forward with this, so just offering that up as a, as a additional motion for council. Councilreitz?
So I will make a motion to, to approve the conservation programs and the rebates with the increase to 10,000 for the drought resistant landscaping and to approve the 100,000 movement of funds.
Second.
Second. May I, councilmember Medicas? Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. All right, motion passes. All right, council, we are ready to adjourn if I can get a motion for that.
Excuse me, mayor, I didn't vote. And the reason I didn't vote, I didn't understand what the motion was. So you said 10,000 for changing out the sod?
Well, landscaping.
Landscaping, because I thought we were talking about rainwater collection.
No.
System. No, we're talking about sod, 10,000.
It's landscaping.
Yeah, there, councilmember, there were two.
It's sod, but it's drought resistant.
Yeah. Two rebates. There's lawn to native adapted bed, and then lawn to native or adapted or prairie grass.
I understand, yeah.
And the, the change that staff had based on the last session was increased, so it's basically a rebate, not based on square footage, but a base, a 50% of the cost up to 6,000, we changed that to 50% of the cost up to 10,000.
10,000. And that's on landscaping?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Did you want to vote?
Yes. I would vote yes.
Aye. All right. A motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned at 8:43 PM. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff.